I've got 6:29 and I think I see all the council members on, so. And now it's 6:30. So I think Lido is going to start the webinar right at 6:30, so I think we should be ready to go.
Webinar started.
Thank you. So welcome to the City Council Regular Meeting for Tuesday, February 15th, 2022. Madam City Clerk, would you call the rule, please?
Mayor Christie Mauchow.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Kaylee Clark.
Here.
Councilmember Karen Moran.
Here.
Councilmember Karen Howe.
Here.
Councilmember Amy Lam.
Here.
Councilmember Kent Trine.
Present.
Madam City Clerk, we do have a quorum. Councilmember Trine, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Trine. I would entertain a motion for approval of the agenda.
A motion to approve the agenda for February 15th. Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it by vote of six zero. Our first order of business is an executive session. This is to evaluate the qualifications of a candidate for public office pursuant to RCW 42.30.110.18 and litigation pursuant to RCW 42.30.110.1i. We do anticipate action and Madam City Attorney, do you have any idea of timing? I'm on the litigation piece at least.
Well, in terms of the order of things, I was hoping the litigation could precede the discussion of qualifications, simply because we've got some council waiting.
No problem. I guess I'm just trying to understand how much time.
Approximate duration of 30 minutes for the pending potential litigation discussion. I'm not sure how long council wants for the discussion of qualifications, but I would say 30 minutes for litigation.
Okay, council, how much time do you all anticipate needing for the discussion of the candidate for public office? 15 minutes? Okay, 15 minutes, so 45 minutes, and so we'll be back roughly 7:17. Okay, we'll see you all on the other side. Thank you.
Okay, I have 7:17. If City Hall can just confirm that they have the cameras back up and running.
Yes, everything is up and running.
Perfect, thank you.
Council, I'd entertain a motion.
I move to accept PSE Electric's offer to pay the city $160,000,357 for joint utility trench change condition costs caused by PSE's electric facilities, and to finalize the Schedule 74 cost for the southeast 4th Street Improvement Project.
I second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, by vote of six zero, the ayes have it.
All right, and I also move to accept PSE Gases' offer to pay the city $611,151 for joint utility trench change condition costs caused by PSE's gas facilities and to send a final invoice to PSE Gas.
I'll second that.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it by vote of six zero. Thank you, Deputy Mayor Clark. And next is our discussion, the selection of a new city council member for position number six. I believe the clerk has a spreadsheet that she can put up for council.
Yes, one moment, then I'll get it prepared.
No problem.
Can everybody see that?
Yes.
Okay, good.
So council, it's up to the council to do this. We don't have to go in an order. Someone could make a motion. And council could vote that way. I don't know that we have to go in the order they are here, because...
I move to go in alphabetical order as we have it. Each person has a vote.
I second.
Okay. Any discussion?
No.
Okay, all those in favor of going in the alphabetical order, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, by vote of six zero, we will go in the order. They are listed here. Madam City Clerk, do you want to read them, just since I know you have to go and input? Our first is Jerry Norman.
Yes, so we'll have Deputy Mayor Clark, would you want to vote?
Yeah, my vote is for Pam Stewart.
Okay.
Okay, so I thought we were going in alphabetical order. Sorry, I thought that's what our motion was, was to go in alphabetical order.
This is alphabetical across the top?
Against council members.
Pardon?
Alphabetical by last name on the top?
Yeah.
So if, I think herein lies the confusion with going in an order like this rather than having someone simply make a motion. But that what we just decided is that we were going to go in alphabetical order.
Yeah, I thought alphabetical order of the council members.
Yes, that's my...
Okay.
Across the top.
I was reading it as the candidates. Sorry, I misunderstood what your motion was.
I was reading it as...
No problem, no problem.
Howe, Lam, sorry.
Got it. It wasn't clear. All right, so Councilmember Howe.
Pamela Stewart.
Councilmember Lam.
I vote for Pam Stewart.
Okay, I will cast my vote for Kathy Richardson. Councilmember Moran.
Kathy Richardson.
Councilmember Trine.
Kathy Richardson.
Okay, council, so we have a split vote, so we do not have a council member elected. It's up to council as to how we want to proceed. We can try voting again, but if everyone's going to vote the exact same people, then we're going to end up with a split vote again. Madam City Attorney, you might correct me. I believe that we have up until April 27th to select a council member, or return this process over to the King County Council to do it for us. So a couple of options is we can attempt to recast votes this evening. We can recast the net on candidates and try again, but I don't think we should simply sit idle and wait for the county to do this for us. So, Deputy Mayor Clark.
So is there an option to send it to the county if we're at an impasse sooner than that date?
I don't know. I'd have to default to our city attorney to ask.
You know, that's a good question. I have not had that situation come up before because most local jurisdictions want the ability to make the appointment themselves. So we would need to check with the King County Elections Office to find out if we could send it if an impasse is quote unquote declared by council, but with that, I'll let you continue to talk amongst yourselves about how you want to proceed. Do we want to... Oh, sorry.
Yeah, let's use the raise hand feature that way. Okay, Councilmember Lam.
Do we want to go back into executive session and try to resolve this?
I don't think that's a bad idea. We could go back there and have a discussion of candidates. Council always reserves that right to go back to executive session, so if that's something that we want to do, we can certainly do that.
So I motion to go back into executive session to discuss and hopefully we can get...
Okay, yeah. I don't know that we have to have a motion for executive session. I think we can just go unless...
You can go just announce the anticipated duration and if action is anticipated.
Okay, so, all right, so council, is 20 minutes sufficient enough time? Too much time?
Too much time, 10 minutes.
Okay, I don't even see a clock on my screen right now. So we'll be going into executive session to evaluate the qualifications of a candidate for elective office, and that is RCW 42.30.110.18? Is that right?
Yes.
We'll be back there for 10 minutes. I guess we'll be back at 7:35.
And council may take action following executive session.
May take action, indeed. All right, we'll see you over there, council.
Okay, I've got 7:35.
Yeah, we're all up and running here.
Thank you.
Does council have any questions? For our city attorney, any discussion points relative to this? We have the option of recasting our net for new candidates. Looking for suggestions from council. Councilmember Howe.
I'd like to see us move as quickly as we can to get King County to a point. And to do whatever speed's necessary to get that accomplished.
Councilmember Lam?
Do you have any additional information, Carrie, on that? Like, is King County voting on just these two candidates that are currently on the table, or do they go and search for other candidates, or? And do they, will they turn around quickly? Like, what is the timeline? I believe it was April something where they have up until?
So this legislative party, the council, has until April 17th to fill the vacancy. I believe it's 90 days from the effective date of the resignation of former council member Gamblin. And then I need to look at the RCW because then King County would make the appointment and they would have 180 days. It doesn't mean they have to take 180 days, but they would have 180 days, which is quite some time. And we could call the King County Elections Office first thing tomorrow morning. Obviously, they're closed right now. It's after hours. But we can call them first thing tomorrow, and we have found them to be very responsive. So I'm sure we could get some more guidance on this as soon as possible to the council.
Councilmember Moran?
Well, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I'm against sending this to King County yet. Because this is our job. This is our job until April. This is our job. I understand if we're sitting here on, you know, April 14th or 15th going, okay, guys, we're just not, we're just can't agree on anything. But because we have had one vote, we're saying, okay, we just can't do it. Give it to the county? No, we fight every day so that we can keep our jurisdiction and make our own decisions, and we're already saying, give it to the county? I know, I'll vote against it.
Well, it is a motion, at least not at this juncture, but I think we need a motion from someone to move forward in one direction or the other. If we want to recast that net, that needs to be a motion if we want to direct the city attorney to investigate the possibility of turning this over to the county. Councilmember Trine.
Thank you, Mayor Mauchow. So my question's for the city manager, Dave Rudat. Staff, do we have the ability to just have staff again reach out to the residents and do a comm thing again and ask for candidates for open seat? And could that happen, say, in the next week or two?
Mayor and council, the staff on a task like that would be able to accommodate if so directed, but would not do so unless directed by a majority motion of the council.
Thank you. So I make a motion that we direct the city manager to have staff make another run at candidates for an open seat that was vacated by Ken Gamblin. That's position number six. And to ask for applicants.
Again. All right, it's been moved and seconded. Councilmember Trine, do you want to speak to your motion?
Yeah, I agree with Karen Moran when she stated, Councilmember Moran, when she stated that this is our job, we're the ones that need to fill this seat, and so we need to get to work. And these applicants, if they so desire to, the ones that didn't make it this time want to apply again, sure, they can, but we should open it out to the residents of Sammamish and take another run at this. Thank you.
Councilmember Moran.
Oh, sorry.
Okay. Then I'll make a comment. I do agree we should try and find someone that, you know, at least a majority of council members can put on the council. I also agree with the statement Karen, Councilmember Howe made earlier, which was that we need to do this sooner than later. So I would say, you know, as maybe offering up an amendment that should this pass, that we need staff to, I mean, everything is already done because we just did this, is to republish this out tomorrow instead of very small window, you know, a week, to garner applicants so that we can try and tighten the timeline as much as possible.
I'll second that amendment.
Okay. So, Mr. City Manager.
Mayor and council, your next council meeting is on March 1st. So if you work backwards on the calendar, we could get it out there for approximately a week and seven, eight days, and then be able to gather those things in and prepare a list for you to start working on as you originally did here at the March 1st meeting would be our best efforts.
All right, so any more discussion on the amendment? Which is a one-week timeline to garner applicants' faith. So all those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay, motion fails three-three, or the amendment, excuse me. So now we'll go to the main motion, which was to basically have staff do this. It's just not within a week's timeframe now. It's just, generally speaking, it's to do that. So any more discussion on the main motion? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay, motion fails. I'd entertain another motion.
I move we push this to King County Council as quickly as possible based on what Carrie Sand is able to determine.
Okay.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Councilmember Howe, did you want to speak to your motion?
I don't think I need to.
Okay, is there any other discussion? I'll just say, considering that we are going to be high-centered, unless someone is willing to pivot, I will be supporting this motion because I think we need to do something. And if we don't do something, we're doing nothing, and it's going to go to King County regardless. I do think it's important to seat a council member as soon as possible, so to get us up high center, I will be supporting this. Okay, if there isn't any more discussion, all those in favor of seeing if we can get this over to King County as soon as possible, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, by vote of four to, motion passes. So Madam City Attorney, if you can just let us know as soon as possible what that looks like, because if they cannot do it, or they will not do it sooner, then those voting in the favorable camp have the opportunity to bring this back for reconsideration.
Understood. I'll follow up as soon as I get some more information, just sure. Thank you.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, council, we're going to move to our next item, which is a public comment. Pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Proclamation 20-28, the city is unable to provide an in-person location for the public to listen to the virtual city council meeting this evening. Meetings are still accessible to the public and public comment is able to be submitted. Written public comment will be accepted until 5:00 PM the day of the meeting. You submit your written comments by emailing to the city clerk at L-H-A-C-H-E-Y at samamish.us and the city council at citycouncil@samamish.us. Please join the Zoom meeting if you'd like to give verbal public comment. Information on how to join is listed in our meeting accessibility at the top of our city council agenda. Up to three minutes of verbal public comment may be provided per person live during the meeting. During public comment, the city clerk will ask attendees to press the raise hand button if they wish to give comment. If joining the meeting by phone dial *9 to raise your hand, when it is your turn to speak, the clerk will unmute you, and you will be given the ability to turn on your web camera if you desire. You'll be notified when you have 15 seconds remaining to wrap up your comments, after which you will be muted at the end of the three-minute comment period. Madam City Clerk, do we have anyone wishing to give public comment this evening?
Please raise your hand if you'd like to give public comment. I currently see three hands raised, and I'll raise, I'll convert them over to panelists in the order that they have raised their hands. Diane Exread? You're muted.
Exread, I live at 22016 Southeast 40th Lane, which is in Issaquah, Providence Point, on 98029. Good evening, Mayor Mauchow and council members. I am commenting tonight to make sure that you are aware that the City of Issaquah's Development Commission will be holding hearings on March 2nd and 3rd on the Issaquah School District's development of the Providence Heights property located on the south end of 228th Avenue Southeast. This project is for their high school number four and eventually elementary school number 17. As you are aware, the Issaquah School District proposes to widen a section of 228 to five-plus lanes and install a traffic signal at the single point of entry and exit to the school site. Construction and operation of this intersection could cause significant impacts on Sammamish citizens. We, the public, have not been informed on the status of the right-of-way permit for this construction. Additionally, stormwater from the north end of the site is planned to be discharged in Sammamish's stormwater system, resulting in potential negative environmental impacts for Sammamish citizens. Lack of information on these issues makes it difficult for all concerned citizens to make informed comments to the Development Commission on this issue. Their hearings record will be closed for further public comment after March 3rd. The Development Commission is a quasi-judicial entity and can only take input during the public hearing. On September 4th, 2020, the City of Sammamish wrote to the Issaquah School District indicating the city's concern about this development and requesting an early submittal of the right-of-way permit application. The permit application was finally received sometime in the fall and winter of 2021. It is now time for the citizens of Sammamish and Issaquah to be informed on the status of this application. I urge this council to speak publicly on this topic. Thank you.
You.
I will now transfer the next caller. Mary Victor? You're muted.
Hi, can I also have visual, please? Thank you. Hi, I'm Mary Victor. I have lived in Sammamish for over two decades. I wanted to say on the city manager's report tonight regarding House Bill 1782, which is going to be at the House today, there's a full substitute bill which had 17 amendments in it of 24 pages. It does have that you're supposed to create additional middle housing near transit areas, and I wanted to specifically note for council that there is an exception for environmentally sensitive areas, which are called critical areas and have been defined since the time the City of Sammamish became a city. Critical areas do include geologically hazardous areas, and geologically hazardous areas include erosion, landslide, seismic, and other geologic events as hazard areas. And I just wanted to make sure that the city knows this because in general, you're not supposed to really be developing in critical areas, and if you do, it's supposed to be the most minimal, and there might even be places that you honestly can't develop. So just wanted to make sure that the city knows that because when you're doing your growth numbers and things, the critical areas are supposed to be taken out. And behind me is a map that was a city produced and starting in 2013, 14, it was part of the code until 2019. It happens to have steep slopes area, which are in the yellow, and it has landslide areas which are slope-based, and that's in the blue to the other side of me. And you will notice that there are places where the yellow overlaps with the blue, but there are many places where the yellow does not. Now, the steep slope hazard area is a landslide hazard area per definition, and this layer that the map was built with by the city is from King County. It's called the Landslide Hazard Slope-Based Map. That information is available, but it is not on the online tools, and I'm finding through experience and what I see that there are times where the city isn't recognizing these areas because if you don't go out to the site unless you sit and do calculations of the two-foot contour lines, which is rather time-consuming and arduous, and even the hearing examiners had to do it at meetings in the past year, you just can't do it. So I'm hoping that the landslide hazard slope-based layer from King County can be put into the online tools, and eventually in the future, if the city develops another version of that, great, you can use them together or replace it with a new one, but right now you're missing that information, and I believe we're making errors. So I did want to bring those up tonight. I know you have a long meeting ahead, but thank you for listening to me and giving me the chance to talk. Thanks.
Thank you.
I will now transfer the next caller. Vince Mandela? You're muted. You're muted.
Vince, we're not able to hear you. If you're able to unmute.
Can you hear me now? I'm unmuted? Okay, apologize. Thank you, uh, Mayor Mauchow and, and the rest of the city councils. I appreciate your time. Um, my comments are similar to the previous citizen who spoke. Um, I, uh, wanted to note that we need accessible reports. The citizens need accessible reports that are accurate. Um, and data over land with inherent geological challenges and actual, uh, risks and dangers that it proposed. Uh, we do, uh, why do parcels, um, not show up when they are mapped to CARA seismic zone, floodplain, uh, landfill hazards, erosion hazards, containing wetlands, streams, and recognizes the inherent limitations of land use on the shoreline of statewide significance? Uh, the field research that came back from King County incorporated the city, state, and fatal, uh, federal government agencies, the native tribes determine the significance to both people and property when considering its development availability over ecologically important fragile land in which my home and many homes, uh, sit in the conservancy zone in this area. So it's important, I would stress to the city, to get the accurate geological maps that need to be finalized and published, uh, to ensure, ensure the safety of the people and the property that shows the CARA mapping that shores, shows best, basically the disingated, uh, uh, without, uh, published report or field research. When's the last time the city has done such a report that takes these geological, uh, conditions into play? We're across a seismic zone. We have eliminated, uh, streams that are no longer the maps and, uh, and that is a great concern. My second area is around, uh, solidification, uh, of the, uh, liquefaction of the area. We are susceptible to that as a, as a city. And, uh, this has been stated in the Greater Eastside Area King, Washington Study that clearly portends out the importance to understand the latest, uh, stability by understanding the geological makeup of the soil, which we, that report states it, and our soil, uh, composition is very similar to that. The other thing I wanted to bring your attention to is a major point is the Critical Areas Study, the CAS report, uh, for East Lake Samamish Trail shows most uh, of the multitude of, of piping, um, and, uh, uh, wetlands and separate streams, uh, should be appearing. Uh, the report discusses stream tributary unmanned stream four, but so that does not appear on any of the city's maps, yet it appears
Fifteen seconds.
And on the D S R. Last point I will make is there needs to be, uh, concern related to the current historical data. Uh, how is this critical data disappeared from the systems of the city? No one can answer that. And I've been working with the city now as the mayor, uh, can, uh, vouch for five years now. I've been stalled out. I've been damaged. I've suffered property damage. I've suffered financial damage and now my home is being flooded, uh, by the upland streams because of the lack of closing the short plat in a plat in a manner. Um, and it is, is, it has brought on all sorts of implications, uh, in the area. Uh, the map showing our short plat is at the very area report by King County on the Samamish River Basin and specifically the Panhandle, uh, which is located directly below of the western slopes as another citizen, uh, would previously stated. So I think the parcel address of thirty-two twenty-eight was damaged from clearcutting, uh, was used to create our short plat. The report shows our property suffered a twenty-foot mudslide over portions of the property and flooding over the parkway because of unupper, unmitig, unmitigated, excuse, excuse me, clearing in January of nineteen ninety
Time is up.
Thank you for the public comment this evening. Yeah, you've, you've, um, gone over your allotted three minutes. So I'm sorry.
My allotted three minutes and I appreciate your time. Uh, thank you for your consideration and, um, I look forward to hearing from you.
Mister City Manager, maybe you can follow up with Mister Mendelo. I, I not exactly sure he had a lot of things going on there. I do believe we have most of the maps that he was referencing, but it sounds like he has some specific issues.
We'll, we'll gather his information and, and follow up. Thank you.
We have one additional, um, people, person that would like to speak. One moment, please. Paul Stickney?
Hello, City Council. Paul Stickney, Samamish here. Um, I'm, I'm going to chat tonight and follow up on my last week's call about, uh, direction and a degree for the city by talking about some inspiring quotes and net positive objectives. Housing supplies in Samamish have been misdeveloped over the, the last forty years and alleviating housing misdevelopment will add holistic, sustainable enrichments above and beyond those we presently have and enjoy in our community today. These enrichments will add far greater value for residents in the city than the development interests. This is a non-zero-sum game. It's about win-win-win for all parties involved and prosperity for posterity. So I'd like to recap some of the net positive objections about enrich and sustain, which I discussed last week. Overarching is come for the natural beauty to Samamish, but have adequate classy housing options to stay for life. Improve over forty significant consequence topics that matter to those in our community. Ensure first-rate parks, recreation fields, open space, trails, connectivity, walkability, and have a community that is a forested suburban character with beautiful greenery and environmental stewardship in existing neighborhoods that make up about ninety-seven percent of the city. Retain the vitality and character of them. Primarily detach single-family homes on suitably sized, appealing sites. Reduce adding more large single-family homes and ensure compatibility for those that are built. Preserve safe, attractive neighborhoods, sensitive to quality, design, and intensity. In mixed-use centers, which are roughly three percent of the city, have a vibrant, classy city heart for fun, housing, variety, health, rapport, and conveniences. Now, meet past and present, different diverse, and smaller housing shortage imbalances in our town center and later meet projected different diverse and smaller housing supply imbalances in our three other centers. I believe that as a community, we should rally as a community
Fifteen seconds.
Could rally behind this approach as it's a non-zero-sum game, win-win-win, and prosperity for posterity. Have a good evening and have a great meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk, if you can just confirm, that was everyone that wanted to give public comment?
Yes, that's everybody. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, counsel, we'll move on to consent. So I entertain a motion for approval of consent. Uh, Deputy Mayor Clark?
Yeah, I move to poll consent item number nine.
Okay. It doesn't have to be a motion. We have the, you can just pull it. So does it require? Okay, so, um, item nine will be pulled. Anything else, counsel? Okay, then I would entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar as amended.
I move to approve the consent calendar as amended.
Definitely. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, ayes have it by a vote of six-zero. Um, we will took item number nine, um, right after presentations and proclamations, counsel. So our next, um, item is proclamation. It's World Spay Day. Um, Deputy Mayor Clark, um, I saw we passed our dogs barking at each other while we walk. So I know you have two pets. Would you mind reading that, um, uh, proclamation, please?
Yes, let me pull that up. Yes, I think my dogs are a lot bigger and scarier than yours, though. Okay, uh, proclamation, World Spay Day. So whereas pets provide companionship to sixty-five percent of U S households and whereas two-point-four million healthy and adoptable cats and dogs are put down in animal shelters each year due to lack of critical resources and public awareness. And whereas nearly ninety percent of pets living in poverty and ninety-eight percent of community feral and stray cats are unaltered and whereas spaying and neutering has been shown to dramatically reduce the number of animals who are put down in animal shelters. And whereas programs exist to assist with the cost of spaying or neutering pets living in poverty and community cats. And whereas veterinarians, national and local animal protection organizations, and private citizens work together to advocate the spaying and neutering of pets and community cats through World Spay Day in the United States and throughout the world in twenty-twenty-one. And now therefore may it be proclaimed that February twenty-second, twenty-twenty-two is designated World Spay Day. Mayor Christie Malchow, on behalf of the city council, is calling upon the people of Samamish to observe the day of having their own pets spayed or neutered or by sponsoring the spaying or neutering of a pet in need.
You, Deputy Mayor Clark? Okay, so now we will, uh, go back to item nine from consent. Deputy Mayor Clark, you pulled this. I'll turn it over to you.
Yeah, so, uh, before this is decided on, uh, I move to suspend council rules.
Second. Thanks.
For what reason?
Well, that, we'll get to that in the discussion. It's been moved and seconded. Deputy Mayor Clark, do you want to speak to motion?
Yeah, suspending rules to discuss the voting that occurred at the Eastside Fire and Rescue Board on Thursday. Um, I don't think that, um, well, you know what? I'm not sure that's a good idea without having Chief Clark here.
Okay, the motion that we have right now is relative to suspending our rules. Councilmember Treeen?
Yeah, I'm not in support of this at all. Seems like big blind side coming to me. Thank you.
Okay, if there isn't any more discussion, the motion on the table is to suspend council rules so that we can talk about something that is not on the agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Nay, this is not how you put something on the agenda.
By a vote of four to, the rules have been suspended.
Bullshit.
Uh, Councilmember Moran, we cannot be swearing during a council meeting.
Okay, I'm going to take a break for a bit then.
Deputy Mayor Clark? I'm going to turn this back over to you.
Yeah, uh, just wanted to discuss, um, what was brought up, the Voting on the Wildfire Prevention Program positions that Chief Clark presented to us on the fourth of January. Um, I wanted to discuss that that was voted on at the Eastside Fire and Rescue Board on Thursday. I think it was February tenth. Um, I did abstain. There were no nays. So all were in favor. And, um, my concern is, uh, the money spent on the consent item number nine. Um, you know, I know that we've had extensive conversations with Chief Clark and, um, our emergency manager, Andrew Stevens, and I just want to ensure that that's going to be the best use of funds moving forward. Um, ensuring that we have a full emergency management program at the city of Samamish as, um, Andrew will, uh, be overseeing a couple of programs with wildfire as well. Um, so, uh, that was my thought and discussion on that.
So Deputy Mayor Clark, if I may, just based on the conversations that I had in the email that we sent out um, today to counsel after being made aware of the Eastside Fire and Rescue vote, the relevant and salient issue, uh, before the council is that a, a board member voted at an Eastside Fire and Rescue meeting without garnering it feedback from the council to be able to take the council's position forward to Eastside Fire and Rescue. The position of the council may have been identical. Um, I'm not sure that, um, we can undo that and that is not the relevant point, um, of, of this discussion. The relevant point of the discussion is the violation of our council rules, um, in which a member has voted without, uh, as representing the city of Samamish and our position without garnering what that position was. Councilmember Moran?
As always, Christie, we go through this frequently. Okay, so I'm going to go through this again. And that is, the city appoints to the board. The board and the, first of all, the city council then approved not only the I L A, but then went back and approved the agreement as it turned into the interlocal. Within that agreement, the Board of Directors has the authority and obligation to administer, operate, manage Eastside Fire and Rescue. Within that, it also has the obligation to, um, provide and service and, uh, for fire prevention, fire suppression, emergency medical, non-emergency medical. And so I do think that, um, wildfire prevention would fall under fire prevention. And so that is one of the jobs of the Board of Directors. So I would disagree with you again that that would have been something that was not for me to vote on. I disagree with you again that that was something that would have required me to have had your okay to vote on because of its safety of everybody. Now, that being said, I think that this is a discussion that would need to have Chief Clark here because this discussion has happened numerous times. And this discussion would need to have the attorneys because I did talk to Carrie today and even she felt it was confusing. So before we get into, we have a, we have a commit, or we have a council member that's gone rogue. Um, I think we should probably have everybody sit down and look because we are going to have probably attorneys that need to probably figure it out. And we have Chief Clark that's probably going to want to weigh in on this. Again. So I would ask that this go, as usual, that this is going to have to go all the way back to our normal retreat. This is not a short discussion. This is a very long discussion, which is going to go into, um, the interlocal and it's going to go into the I L A and it's going to come into our rules. This is not a simple discussion.
So if you're completed with your comments, I just want to confirm that before we move on.
I do want to finish my comments and that is that, um, both of us voted. I did not see anybody that did not vote. It was even asked at the end of the voting, if there was anybody, it was a unanimous vote. So to see that all of a sudden there was a, uh, somebody had, uh, not voted in that vote last week. I called to ask if it was our new person who had joined the board and they surprised me and said, well, no, I, I guess Kaylee said she didn't vote. But that has, first of all, I didn't see that. That's new to me and it's probably going to be new to anybody else who read those minutes as they are not approved yet.
That completes your statements.
For the moment.
Okay, that's fine. You always reserve the right to raise your hand again. So Councilmember Moran, um, I'll make a few comments. Just, I was not at the Eastside Fire and Board, uh, meeting, um, but I did hear from the Deputy Mayor Clark as well as from Councilmember Howe on what transpired there. Um, and the issue is not, um, relevant, I think, to the vote itself. It's how the vote occurred that is at issue here with council and I, I And I I I did speak with the city attorney as well, who read the ILA, but the but the ILA, while it gives board members the ability to vote, our council rules dictate how voting occurs. And so I do want to read the council rule that is in question here, which is seven point three point one, and this is relative to voting at external boards or commissions. It says, "Any voting action to be taken on behalf of the city at an external board, commission, or committee meeting shall be discussed by the council so that the city representative may cast votes that represent the majority of the council. Members may not vote on such action items without first receiving direction from a majority of the council at an open meeting unless receiving such direction is not feasible due to timing or urgency. Packet materials for an external board, commission, or committee where action will be taken on behalf of the city shall be furnished to the full council so that the council may prepare to give the city representative guidance on voting." It goes on, but that is the relevant portion. So I do not question that board members should be voting. I think what is in question here is that the vote was taken without engaging the council as a body for direction on how to vote. Deputy Mayor Clark?
Yeah, I wanted to say that I also could have sent um the board packet in and discuss the agenda at that um at last week's meeting, so I would also like to take fault in this as well. Because I could have done something as well, but I did not open the packet until that afternoon.
So council, I don't know how we proceed with this, but essentially the action that was taken is likely a a done action. I think there are a couple of takeaways from this. One is if you are serving on an external board, you need to open your packet in a timely fashion. This packet came out, according to the deputy mayor, on February third, giving plenty of time for council to have brought this up at last week's meeting so that council could have given direction as Councilmember Lamb had requested for her pick meeting that occurred last week. I think it's very important when we're dealing with these issues, especially one that contends with both line items in our budget, but as well as emergency management as a whole for the city, that the council be allowed to weigh in. Um, again, Councilmember Moran, I do not, um, I I think you're correct in in your read on the ILA, that the ILA does not supersede our council rules. And those are there so that voting members are bringing forth the will of the city of Sammamish and not personal things, so again.
I would disagree. I would.
Our rules are clear. Um, and I do have the, I have the floor right now. I do have the floor. I I think our rules are very clear about serving on external boards and commissions, about how they are to function. And it is so that the will of the council and therefore the city of Sammamish is carried forward and not on an individual basis. They are very clear.
Okay, I think then that we should have.
Raise your hand feature so that we're not jumping in in front of another council member, please. And I do wanna ask if anyone else wants to speak before we go on a round two. Okay, Councilmember Howe?
Hey, just just quickly, cuz I'm focused on the outcome of this. I think it is confusing as to who's on first, and I think that there's gonna be times we're gonna have this uh conflict of whose will supers, whose whose interests supersede whose, and because we are a minority potentially. I mean, there's there's something that we we need to work with our other partners in this so that we're not in a minority voice at times. I think that that is one outcome from something like this. The other thing that I I remember when uh Chief Clark was talking to us early on, it was that um he wants to hear from us as one unified voice, and so that there isn't like um some kind of shadow policy that's going on in terms of how people might think or feel one particular way. And we're we're not good at being a unified voice yet because I think some of us, like me, are still learning how to do that. But I will strive to to certainly do that so that you feel really empowered, Karen and Kaylee, as you go into these meetings, to know that you have the full will of the council behind you.
Councilmember Moran?
The other thing that Chief Clark made very clear is to know the difference of when you're supposed to be wearing your city hat and know when you're supposed to be wearing your EFNR hat. And I think that is the discussion that needs to be had, and I think it's a discussion that needs to be had when Chief Clark is here because those are votes that are gonna happen, that are gonna happen as the one that happened regarding the wildfire. That is not an I-Sammamish vote. That is a some, a vote that is bigger than us. It is a vote that frankly, if you are gonna catch every vote for EFNR and look at it as an I-Sammamish, then you better start thinking, I'm going to have my own department. Because I, 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 I know that's that's what a lot of people wanna think. EFNR is a we. And wearing the EFNR hat means some, you gotta think of it as a we. And so when we start looking at wildfires, we look at it as a what's best for the group. And so sometimes you have to wear that we hat. And so I think that discussion needs to be had, it should be had with Chief Clark here because I'm not gonna be able to make it as clear and concise as he can. And um and regardless of what I say, you're going to disagree with me on it. And so rather than finish this discussion tonight, again, I'm going to say this needs to go on the agenda for the um uh work session and stuff in in March for the retreat because frankly, there is a difference, there is stuff in the ILA, I am going to disagree with you on this. And I think that we are going to have to have this discussion with Chief Clark involved. And if there's a difference with the attorneys between the fire district and our city attorney, let them have that discussion. But I think that we need to have Chief Clark in this discussion.
So I don't see any other hands up, but what I will say is, I I think we're co-mingling issues here. The issue is not wildfire prevention. I don't think anybody on this council disagrees with you that that certainly falls under Eastside Fire and Rescue. And taking votes on that is certainly under your purview as a board member. I don't disagree. Where we disagree is that our council rules clearly state that before you go and vote at Eastside Fire and Rescue or the Public Issues Committee or whatever external board, that those be bubbled up to the council because your job as a board member, any of our jobs as a board member, is to simply convey the city of Sammamish's position and any points that are brought up to our partners. It's not an I about Sammamish, it is about the we. And again, I don't wanna co-mingle issues. I'm not saying that I disagree with your vote, Councilmember Moran. I disagree that you did not afford the city council to weigh in and give you feedback as to guide how you should be voting. Councilmember Moran, I do have the floor, please. So I just wanna be sure that we're clear. Our council rules are clear. If we want to have a discussion in the future relative to our council rules and vacate the ability for uh board members to not engage the council, but this is no different from not bringing the budget forward to us for Eastside Fire and Rescue for approval. These are all big financial commitments for the city of Sammamish, and the council by majority is how we guide policy. This is most definitely a policy-related issue and should have been given to the council for feedback. Uh, again, please don't co-mingle the fact of what was voted on. That is not the point here this evening. The point is the violation of council rules in voting without engaging your fellow council members. Is there anyone else that wants to make any comments this evening? Karen, you still have your hand up if you'd like to speak again. I think we'll have this be a last round, but I do want to give council members that have not spoken yet an opportunity. Okay, Councilmember Moran?
To say that I didn't give council members an opportunity is is really kind of a interesting way to put it, considering that I was the one who invited the chief to come and speak to the council. And he spoke to the council, he gave a presentation to the council. He asked any council members if they had any comments, questions, or anything whatsoever um that he would be more than happy to answer that. I sent an email to the council, I had one person who sent me a question, I answered that question. I heard nothing back after that, nothing, not a peep, not a word, nothing after that. So to say that I did not afford the council any airtime, it's kind of a cheap shot, I disagree with that. And um then also the fact that, you know, chief didn't say anything, that's that's completely wrong because he was here. He also offered himself um open to the council at any time on this. So again, I read the packet unfortunately right before the meeting. That's what happened. Um, but the fact is, is that everybody had ample time, everybody had that, they, chief was here. He was here to answer questions, he offered to answer questions to anybody who might have them in the future. Nobody had anything. So to say that council did not have an opportunity is completely wrong. Again, I'm gonna ask if this go on the retreat.
Okay, Councilmember Moran, I I'm gonna refer you back to the email chain where in January I said, "No problem, just needs to be on the agenda for discussion prior to the February EFR board meeting." So my suggestion would be it to be on the agenda two-one, twenty twenty-two meeting. I assume the next meeting is February tenth, to which you did not respond with when the next EFR board meeting is. So I specifically asked for it to be on the agenda so that we could give guidance. I don't think we need to rehash the issue specifically relative to the vote. Um, this, again, it's not about the vote, it's the fact that the vote was taken without guidance from council. We had a discussion on it, and it was requested that this be brought back to council for guidance on how to vote. That's the issue at hand. Council, if there isn't any more on this, we do need to circle back on item number nine on consent. So if there are item, there are questions on the consent item itself, I think now would be an appropriate time to pull those forward. Deputy Mayor Clark, oh, sorry. Councilmember Howe?
Hi, thank you, Mayor. I did have a question about this. I mean, I sent several questions in to Andrew, and he was very good about answering them. Um, I still had some open questions, and it had to do with uh the grant money. Is it earmarked specifically for this? Can it be repurposed? Um, I I have several problems with this particular um device being brought into the city cuz I don't know how it's gonna get really managed appropriately and how we're gonna be able to apportion this cost. And I just question how much of it get used, but can the grant money get repurposed? Is it's, is it specifically earmarked? Does it expire? So those are my two questions.
I'm I'm gonna turn that over to the city manager for answering.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Um, I'll turn this over to Andrew, but this item was discussed during the budget. Um, and we anticipated it so that we put money in here, and then we would be reimbursed. Um, so as a matter of um order on this particular issue, um as I said, it was in the budget. But at this point, uh Andrew, would you proceed with uh being available here to answer questions? Uh, we can talk about the management of it, whose resource it is, um whose resource it is not, um but please proceed.
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. City Manager. Um, Councilmember Howe, um, thank you for that question. Yes, this grant has been earmarked specifically for this piece of equipment. You can go through a process potentially with the state to reallocate those funds and repurpose that. Um, however, that is not, I guess, looked upon uh kindly by the state. You can actually lose out on potential future grant allocations in the future. Um, I think this is actually a wonderful opportunity for the city. You have a piece of equipment who, what has been shown to be one of the most effective preparedness tools out there in the nation with very limited capacity of ever, again, making it to Washington and being able to own that and utilize it across, at our schools, within our school districts, at our public utilities, uh within our public businesses and service organizations, um and train volunteers and staff to utilize this event. You're basically being able to obtain a three hundred thousand dollar piece of equipment for roughly eighteen thousand dollars of local cost share. Uh, so it is, to me, I see it as a win-win situation that could greatly benefit the city of Sammamish. I've heard a lot of talk about hazards and geological threats tonight from public comment. And what better way to demonstrate the risk and bring attention and awareness to our residents than having them actually simulate an earthquake through this simulator? Um, the management of the tool um is definitely something we can do in the city through our uh both as the employee through the emergency management program with EFR. There are sections within this grant that would allow the city to award management of the grant to a sub-agency such as EFR. If you wanted EFR to take over management and maintenance of this asset, that can be done through a s- separate contract between the two agencies. Um, but I don't think this is something that should be passed upon um as it truly is a benefit to the region and the residents.
Thank you.
Councilmember Trin?
Yeah, I move that uh we authorize the city manager to purchase a used earthquake simulator trailer utilizing budgeted emergency management funds to, for not to exceed fifty-four thousand dollars.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Councilmember Trin, did you want to speak to your motion?
Yes, I do. Yeah, I'm an educator. I'm also from Southern California, and I've been through a lot of earthquakes. I've also been through simulator training in, to be ready to respond in the situations that are emergency-related, especially to earthquakes. This kind of simulator is a, is a benefit to, I mean, I would say mainly our school kids cuz what we need, what we have been training our s- our students. We we we've actually had to adjust our training over the last seven, well, since Columbine. We've been retraining our students on how to respond to emergencies inside the schools. And so this is just another one of the vehicles which we can improve our training of our students of adults throughout the city and a, and like the uh Andrew Stevens said, throughout the region uh in how to respond in a, in a case of an earthquake. Need to move forward with this, and I I think we should take control of it too and have it be something that actually pays for itself. Thank you very much. Ask for your support.
Thanks. I I do have a a few questions. The agenda bill said we rented one in twenty eighteen, but not twenty nineteen. I'm just curious why we didn't rent one in twenty nineteen.
Yeah, that's a great question, Mayor. Uh, simply because it was not available. Um, these tools are, again, come in very high demand. They're rented out by other states, other cities, other jurisdictions, large private businesses um across the nation. Uh, so the ability for us to utilize a simulator at our um, you know, at our schedule is another extremely valuable uh, you know, plus in, you know, favor of supporting this uh, this this purchase. So the option of them being able to bring these units up from California um also during rain, during rainy seasons and stuff, as it's scheduled around possibly our preparedness fair, it really was um luck that we were were able to get it in two thousand eighteen. And that um year was actually one of our highest or the highest draws for our preparedness fair where we had about roughly thirteen hundred people come through that trailer uh just to go through that experience. So again, it cost about five, six thousand dollars to rent this once. Even if we use this piece of equipment three times, it would basically pay for itself. And we plan on creating a program, creating a training program with our affiliated CERT volunteers to be able to speak and educate our populations side by side with staff, side by side with the uh approval of the additional emergence, regional emergency management staff that EFR now has the authority to bring to the table. So I think we have a lot of options to get this out here in front of our stakeholders.
Great. Uh, I think we have several other questions, including another one that I have. Um, the tow, the tow vehicle needs to be a three-quarter ton. I assume that the city of Sammamish already has that vehicle and that we're not asking to then buy another vehicle. Mr. City Manager, do we have a three-quarter ton truck that can tow this?
Yes, Mayor, we do. We, uh, three-quarter ton is a standard pickup truck, some might half-ton, but three-quarter ton is not a problem. We have even one ton and larger.
Excellent. Um, so I'm certainly supportive of, of this. I think um, with the, the land share that being through grant funding and the educational opportunities that this affords the city, I think this would be a good use of funds. And while we only used it once in twenty eighteen, the fact that we have it will be um, a great resource for our residents. Um, so yeah, I'll be supporting the motion. Councilmember Howe.
Well, I just have, uh, just a couple of more uh, questions. It has to do with, there's, it's a two thousand to three thousand dollar a year maintenance fee. I mean, what I would be supportive of is transferring this to, to EFOR so that it gets used regionally. It, there's kind of no point in having it if it doesn't get used a lot. I assume there's a depreciation schedule that was shown as kind of zero it out in about seven years. Cause I don't know how much uh, use it would actually get and I don't know um, how much, you know, wear and tear there is actually on the, on the unit. Does it require, I, I have a question for the city manager. Does it require special training to run it? Have there been any injuries from using it? About ten people at a time can fit in the thing. Um, and has it proven or shown, is there any study that shows that this is an effective tool?
Well, I think the most practical person to, to answer that is probably Andrew. But I will tell you that I can still remember the uh, uh, ducking uh, what was duck and hide or what drills from atomic bomb issues from when I was in grade school. So embedding in, in this, in the mind of children is just like dealing with sprinkler trailers um, in the fire service. You teach people when they're young and it just becomes motor memory of what to do um, and where to hide in an earthquake and where not to hide. Um, so the practicality of that tool um, is, is just so critically important. And the issues that you have here in the Northwest with the whole Cascadia rising, um, and the uh, recognition only in the last forty or fifty years of the seismic problems that you have here is it, it's enormous. You could see the ones in Southern California and they've been a little more prolific, but when they happen here, they happen big. But uh, Andrew, please take it over from there with uh, to Councilmember Howe's questions.
Yeah, thank you, sir. Um, regarding injuries, let me address that first. Um, I'm not aware of any injuries. Um, there are some additional recommendations that we would make um, for people riding it. There would be, you know, kind of like a roller coaster. If you have bad back, pregnant, you know, heart problems, you know, we recommend that you don't ride this, right? Um, regarding special training, yes, uh, upon purchase, we will conduct special training with the vendors. Um, they will also be working with our maintenance and our mechanic staff to ensure that we know how to properly preventive, uh, main, do preventive maintenance on the piece of equipment before and after every event. Um, and going to the value of real-life simulations, um, I, I, regarding this specific incident, I don't know if there's any scientific study, but there are probably countless studies on how to add realism to exercises, realism to simulations that reinforces the concept. Um, not many people in Washington have ever felt an eight-point-oh earthquake. And even if it's for just five or ten seconds in a simulator, the value that someone's going to be able to get from feeling that and then also seeing, you know, uh, furniture and equipment move and, you know, stuffed animals fall out of shelves and to simulate that that could possibly be something heavier. Um, it goes to support mitigation, education at its core principles. Um, and it just adds so much more depth than just duck covering and holding and pretending that the ground is shaking. I think the proof of concept is the results and the interviews and the comments we got post bringing this to two thousand eighteen. And I'm sure you can go to Ready America's website and you can look at the interviews, you can look at the news reports. Every time this simulator comes to a city, it's usually featured on the news. People love it. And anytime you can draw that kind of excitement and attention around emergency preparedness, something that's usually an afterthought until the disaster actually happens, there's your value.
Councilmember Moran.
Thank you.
Andrew, is this something that um, you would be able to take um, or I guess you could have CERTs take um, around to the different schools? Cause I'm thinking this would be something that would be awesome for, in particular, um, the elementary schools, because the more that we can get the kids to not be afraid uh, during an earthquake, the better off we're going to be.
Yeah, that's actually one of the core audiences we're hoping to reach. So once we work out the, obviously the purchasing, the purchase of this, um, work out the programmatic details, the training side, we are going to be working with our CERTs, we are going to be working with our Fire Corps volunteers and we are going to be first and primarily reaching out to our school districts and setting up a calendar for them to schedule it and rent it. Um, we've seen very similar programs down in California, as uh, Councilmember Trine mentioned, where schools can actually rent these units for their special days or homecomings or, you know, in an elementary field days and so forth.
Yeah, cause I could see this at like the Fourth of July or a couple of um, you know, the farmer's market thing or even at the, you know, one or two of the Christmas tree things. I mean, I could just, I, I could see this out and about a lot. So I'm very excited about it. So you'll have my support.
Absolutely. Thank you. And even if we utilize just the city's events, we have Rigapalooza, Fourth of July, National Night Out, Chinese New Year, um, or Lunar New Year, lots of opportunities.
Councilmember Moran.
Hi, Andrew. Um, are you aware of how schools teach earthquake preparedness now?
Yes, I know that is incorporated through several curriculums. Um, they do duck cover and hole drills. They participate in the great shakeouts. Um, obviously, there's, there's curriculums that can be tied into all sorts of different learning at every levels, but primarily is through just a monthly or bimonthly exercise. I do sit on the Public Safety Committee for Lake Washington School District. So we do talk a lot about different drills as well.
Okay. So I grew up in Michigan and we did tornado drills once a month. Um, I still remember those. Um, they didn't cost us anything. Um, I am not supportive of this equipment because I do believe that schoolchildren, um, what, if, if I can remember these tornado drills, I'm sure that um, the earthquake preparedness, um, you know, there is a level that, that they will absorb. Um, so I do not believe that this is a good use of funds. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I do have one last comment and it's relative to the name Councilmember Howe had stated, which was about transferring it to Eastside Fire. And I think it's a used trailer, so I do have some concerns if we did not keep it in-house ourselves as the city of Sammamish and it was used more broadly, that the longevity of the trailer would um, diminish greatly. So my preference would be to keep it here. The reality is, is that um, the emergency manager was able to go out and get a grant for the land share of this trailer. It's an eighteen thousand dollar commitment on our part. That's pretty minor um, considering um, what we would get out of it. And we have a lot of events. Um, hopefully we can actually do them if COVID would ever just go away. Um, but it, it is a nice thing for our community. It isn't, um, you know, just eighteen thousand dollars, but I do think that the emergency manager spoke to the fact that if we don't utilize the grant, the next time we go and try and get a grant, we may get denied and that one may be a bigger deal. So um, I would caution council on declining thirty-six thousand dollars in grant funding from this state. Councilmember Moran, did you have another comment? Is your hand just still up? Okay. All right. I don't have any more hands up. So the motion on the table is for approval of the um, shakeout trailer. All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Deputy Mayor Clark, I'm not sure how you voted, so I don't know how to call that one.
I said yes. Didn't realize it was already in the budget from last year, so.
Gotcha. Okay, so by a vote of five-one, we have approved um, the purchase of that shakeout trailer. Thank you, Andrew, for assisting on that one.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, counsel. So to get us back on track, um, our first, our next item, not our first. Uh, this is a discussion on the King County Urban Growth Capacity Study and the county-wide planning policies and our growth targets.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, David Pyle um, is on deck and Miriam Leitner.
Good evening, Mayor Moran, city council members. David Pyle, Department of Community Development. Uh, Miriam Leitner, our planning manager, and I are back again to carry on with the discussion related to the remand of our growth targets. Tonight, we will, we will be presenting the updated land capacity data to you and sharing some items for consideration as you start to think about what the proposed revised target should be. This evening, we are not asking the council for direction. We wanted to give you all some time to absorb the information presented. We will be back in two weeks on March first, and at that point, we'll be asking the council to select a tentative growth target so that staff can work with King County and the King County inter-jurisdictional team and Growth Management Planning Council in April for their input. With that, I'll hand things over to Miriam to share our updated land capacity information. Miriam?
Thanks, David. I'm gonna, as usual, turn off my video while I go over my notes for the presentation and turn it back on when I'm done. Good evening, city council members. We're going to go ahead and jump right into the updated land capacity numbers. And um, before we look at the numbers themselves, I wanted to start with an overview of the approach used to update the data. Our first step was to meet with Sammamish Plateau Water to review the updated sewer capacity information that they provided. They stated that the district's interim improvement projects are funded and will add capacity in the interim timeframe. And so long as King County constructs the Sammamish Plateau diversion by twenty thirty, parcels within the North Service Area should be buildable to their zoning capacity within the planning horizon. So based on this information, we determined that all of the impacted parcels that were identified in January of twenty twenty-one could now be added back to land capacity. This change meant that the only parcels now excluded for infrastructure gaps were those requiring a lift station or a critical sewer link. These items rely on developers to cover the costs and the improvements needed are substantial enough that the impacted areas may be unlikely to be developed or redeveloped in the next twenty-five years. We asked Sammamish Plateau Water to re-review the list of parcels requiring a lift station or a critical sewer link, which were initially identified in their June of twenty twenty response to help ensure accuracy related to sewer capacity. Sammamish Plateau Water updated five parcels from that list. So our next step was to integrate the impacted parcels into the data set. And once this was done, we did a final check of the entire data set to ensure proper definitions had been applied. And we then entered the information into the Phase Four table to get our final capacity numbers. So with all of that done, you can see the updated capacity numbers here. These initial capacity numbers include the discounts for public purpose and right-of-way areas, but they do not include a market factor, which we're going to be talking about shortly. As you can see, there were capacity increases in every zone except for the vacant R-12 zone. And our revised residential capacity is four hundred and eighty-nine acres, which equates to three thousand four hundred and thirty-seven housing units. Now we're going to look at the impact on non-residential capacity, which shows a buildable area of approximately sixty acres. Again, the initial capacity here is shown without a market factor, but with discounts for right-of-way and public purpose areas. With the employment density of three hundred and seventy square feet per job applied, this equates to approximately twenty-six hundred jobs. Are there any questions on either of these tables before we move on? Great. Okay, so we're going to be asking council to decide on market factor when we meet on March first. And we wanted to spend some time tonight explaining what market factor is and looking at the examples that were provided in Exhibit Two. So market factor is the percentage of buildable land that due to market constraints is unlikely to be developed during the twenty-year planning period. It helps account for landowner preference not to develop or the inability to develop property over the planning period. And it's applied to both residential and non-residential zones. Keeping track of high market factor versus low market factor can be confusing, so I'll share my trick, which I shared at the March twenty twenty-one meeting, channel the late eighties and think of Paula Abdul's Opposites Attract. What I mean here is a high level of development is expected over the planning period, brings a low market factor and where development may be more difficult or slower, there's a high market factor. To determine the ranges of market factors for cities to consider, King County enlisted the help of a consultant. Here you'll see the ranges for Sammamish's Vision twenty fifty category of cities and towns, as well as high-capacity transit category to provide a comparison. The percentages in gold are the ranges for Sammamish suggested by King County. One item to note is that cities were not required to stay within these ranges provided by King County, but did have to provide an explanation if selecting a percentage outside of those parameters. Cities are also allowed to choose different market factors for each zone within the different product types. So for example, you may decide to have one market factor in R-six and a different one in R-eight. So tonight, we're going to be showing you the updated land capacity numbers with three different market factors applied, which match what you have in Exhibit Two of your packets. The first slide shows the highest percentage of the ranges provided by King County. This was the market factor selected by city council in March of last year. As you may remember from our last meeting, both the R-12 and R-18 zones had negative capacity due to the structures being built to a higher density than the current code allows. Um, and this continues to be the case here. So negative capacity has been changed in those two zones to zero capacity as it's unlikely that anything's going to be redeveloped into fewer units than it is now. With the highest percentage of market factor applied to our updated capacity, we have a total capacity of one thousand six hundred and ninety-seven housing units. And just for reference, our previous housing capacity with this market factor was, that was applied was one thousand one hundred and forty-four units. So you're looking at an increase of about five hundred and fifty units. Now we're going to look at the middle of the range provided by King County. We have again the same issue with R-12 and R-18, so those have been zeroed out. And in this scenario, you end up with two thousand and seven housing units. And then finally, we're looking at the lowest percentage in the range, which gives us two thousand three hundred and thirteen housing units. For our non-residential zones, we also have to apply the employment density to get from final capacity to jobs. And while we're not going to modify our employment density, we did want to review how we got to that number and how the various market factors impact job capacity. So you may remember from our last meeting that employment density is the formula used to convert non-residential building area into expected capacity for employment. And just like with market factor, opposites attract. The lower the square foot per job, the higher the density of use. Employment density also varies widely by building type or employment sector. So for example, think about a warehouse versus an office building. A warehouse uses a lot of square footage to store its inventory, so it's going to have significantly more square footage per job than an office would. For employment density, King County again enlisted the help of a consultant to estimate the average total square feet per job in individual jurisdictions and market areas across King County. On screen, you'll see the analysis results for Sammamish as well as a few other cities for comparison. As you can see, in two thousand and six and two thousand and nineteen, you'll notice that the gross square feet per job in Sammamish stayed fairly consistent. And here you see the roll-up by market area, which informed the range recommendations for cities from King County. Sammamish falls into the east side category with a range of two hundred to four hundred. Based on the analysis results, having little variation over time and the assumption that employment types aren't expected to change much from what they currently are, city council chose to apply an employment density informed by the historic density using three hundred and seventy square feet per job, which fits within the recommended range for Sammamish's east side market area. And here's just a quick reminder of the formula um, to show how employment density is applied to obtain the final employment capacity. So with that, we're going to go ahead and move on to the numbers. So with that, we're gonna go ahead and move on to the numbers. Again, we're starting with the highest market factor applied. And I want to direct your attention to the bottom table, starting with the column labeled NB for Neighborhood Business. The redevelopable area in Neighborhood Business is just one parcel. So when a 50% market factor is applied, it produces a negative capacity and is zeroed out. The Office and Community Business Zones also had negative capacity, so we used the same King County guidance as we did previously and applied the formula to each individual parcel within those zones, using only those that showed a positive capacity. And so what you see here on screen are the adjusted capacities for those two zones. And with those modifications, we're showing a capacity of 500 jobs. And here, we're looking at the middle percentage range, or the middle percentage of the range. And you'll see the same, that the, sorry, you'll see that this Office and Neighborhood Business Zones now have positive capacity without having to be adjusted, but the Community Business Zone is still using that adjusted capacity. In this scenario, we end up with a job capacity of 728 jobs. And finally, looking at the lowest percentage in the range, we continue to use an adjusted capacity in the Community Business Zone and are showing a total capacity of 1,074 jobs. So as you can see, market factor plays a big role in determining final housing and job capacity. So we think it's something that's worth spending some time thinking about in preparation for our next meeting on March 1st. There are also external factors that are important to consider as well, especially as you're thinking about revising the growth targets. So I'm gonna hand it back over to David to talk about those.
Thank you, Miriam. If you could go to the next slide, that'd be great. I will also be stopping my video feed while I'm looking at my notes, so not to distract you as my eyes look up and down, so don't let that distract you. A topic that we wanted to raise to the attention of the council is one that has become pervasive in most aspects of our work and one that is certainly going to become a central component of the city's 2024 Comprehensive Plan Periodic Update. Staff have been tracking state, regional, and local housing discussions that are ongoing in response to housing supply imbalance and affordability. I wanted to highlight the various efforts and conversations here tonight because we think it is important for you to know about them, particularly as we begin our Comprehensive Plan Update, but also because we believe they warrant your consideration as you're thinking about what Sumamish's revised growth targets should be. Next slide. While we have heard about the nationwide and statewide housing shortage, we thought we'd focus tonight's discussion on the regional housing need. The Puget Sound Regional Council Needs Assessment, completed in April of 2021, highlighted a backlog for our region of 46,000 units needed just to catch up to our current population's housing needs. Based on their population projections, they estimate that by 2050, 810,000 new units will be, will need to be added, with 34% of those affordable to moderate and lower incomes. PSRC has also noted a need for more diverse housing types beyond just single-family homes to help people better access transit, jobs, and services. The region's needs for affordable housing have also been growing over time. In 2018, the King County Regional Affordable Housing Task Force released its Five-Year Action Plan, which is being implemented by the Affordable Housing Committee of the Growth Management Planning Council, or GMPC. The overarching goal of the Five-Year Action Plan is to strive to eliminate cost burden for households earning 80% area median income and below, with a priority for serving households at or below 50% area median income. Progress of the Five-Year Action Plan is tracked on the Regional Affordable Housing Dashboard, which includes jurisdictional housing affordability snapshots, where you can see how Sumamish compares to other local jurisdictions. For the council's reference, there are links to each of these different reports and websites in tonight's agenda bill. The committee has, the Affordable Housing Committee has also been tasked by the Growth Management Planning Council to strengthen the King County countywide planning policies, which recently culminated in the passing of GMPC Motion 21-1, which requires the Affordable Housing Committee to review and make recommendations to the GMPC related to monitoring and reporting jurisdictional housing supply, housing affordability, housing needs, and disparities between subregion and jurisdictional affordable housing needs. They're also tasked creating an accountability and implementation framework to address these needs. These efforts are likely to result in changes to the countywide planning policies in 2023, which we will need to address in our 2024 Comprehensive Plan Periodic Update and could result in an updated growth target or new CPP adopted targets related to housing supply and affordability at that time. Next slide, please. So how does this all fit together? To start with, House Bill 1220 amended the language of RCW 3670A to change the tone of the RCW components related to the city's role and responsibility in providing housing supply. HB 1220 changed the language of RCW 3670A 020 from "encourage the availability of affordable housing to all economic segments of the population" to "plan for and accommodate housing affordable to all economic segments of the population." This change, while it appears subtle, is a definitive shift in tone. Further, HB 1220 amended RCW 3670A 0702A to add specific requirements around how a jurisdiction must plan to provide for housing supply, including an inventory and analysis of existing and projected housing needs that identifies the number of housing units necessary to meet the jurisdiction's disaggregated projected need provided by King County, including affordability. Changes made under House Bill 1220 are important to note as they are influential around how we perceive our Comprehensive Plan Update with regard to how we accommodate projected future housing needs in terms of supply, diversity of type, and affordability. Under HB 1220, the Washington State Department of Commerce is required to provide the inventory and analysis of existing and projected housing needs that identifies the number of housing units necessary to meet the projected growth on a statewide level, including units for moderate, low, very low, and extremely low income households, excuse me, as well as projected needs for emergency housing, emergency shelters, and permanent supportive housing. The Office of Financial Management Projected Needs Report is due for release in April of 2022 and will form the basis for the next steps to be taken by the King County Growth Management Council Affordable Housing Committee. Once the Office of Financial Management Housing Needs Projections are issued, King County staff will work with regional partners to determine how to disaggregate the region's need down to the city level. This will likely result in assignment of specific numbers of units a city is obligated to provide. With the disaggregated housing needs information available later this year, the King County Affordable Housing Committee will convene as directed by GMPC Motion 21-1 and will likely generate recommended amendments to the King County countywide planning policies in the winter of 2022 and 2023, which will then be routed to the Growth Management Planning Council for review. The GMPC will likely wrap up review in spring of 2023 and transmit recommended CPP updates addressing HB 1220 to the King County Council in the fall of 2023, with adoption of updated CPPs by the King County Council in the fall of 20, in the late fall of 2023. Once the CPPs have been updated in the fall of 2023, the city will then need to integrate any changes to the CPPs into the city's Comprehensive Plan Periodic Update in order to be consistent with the CPPs, which is a necessity for Comprehensive Plan certification by the PSRC. As you can see, HB 1220 has a strong influence over our Comprehensive Plan. Periodic update. If we are assigned a disaggregated housing supply number through the work done by the Affordable Housing Committee that cannot be accommodated by our growth target, we will find ourselves in a position where we will need to reconcile the difference. The challenge here is that we do not know what that number will be as neither the State Needs Report nor the King County disaggregated needs reports are available and will not be available for quite some time. Next slide. As part of a separate conversation, the Housing Development Consortium has been building background information in support of a proposed affordable housing tax levy under RCW 8452105. Although I am unsure how they calculated this number, the HDC has indicated that there is a need for approximately 9,803 affordable housing units in Sumamish by 2044. This slide is from the, an HDC presentation delivered to the Arch Executive Board last fall. This, this slide and the complete presentation by the HDC was provided to the council following that meeting and a follow-up email. While we do not yet know how the State OFM Needs Report and King County disaggregated needs assignments will compare, this number caught my attention. Next slide, please. In early 2019, the city adopted its housing strategy, Sumamish Homegrown. Homegrown is centered on the housing themes you see on screen, which reflect our current Comprehensive Plan's housing goals. While Homegrown addresses the broad range of housing needs in Sumamish, we know additional work is needed to address the areas of housing supply and variety and housing affordability, just like we've done with our work on Phase Two Development Regulations, which address the theme of neighborhood vitality and character. Thankfully, council approved our application to the Washington State Department of Commerce for a Housing Action Plan Grant. This work will be a great precursor to our Comprehensive Plan Update and will help ensure that we have a strong plan for addressing the community's housing needs while also aligning with the new state and regional requirements. It's important to keep this work in mind as you're thinking about what an appropriate growth target should be. Next slide, please. We realized that was a lot of information, so we wanted to end the evening's presentation with two questions to prime your thoughts for our next meeting on this topic scheduled for March 1st. Are market factors previously selected by the City Council still appropriate? And, given the changes in land capacity and consideration of regional housing needs, what are the appropriate growth targets for Sumamish? We ask that you don't answer these tonight, rather that you consider the information provided on February 1 and provided this evening in anticipation of a council discussion on this topic on March 1, where you will be asked to answer these questions through motion providing specific direction to staff so that we may proceed in working with King County. Next slide, please. And in closing, just a reminder on the various meeting dates related to this project. We look forward to continuing this discussion on March 1st. Thank you. Next slide.
We've got questions. Councilmember Hal?
Hey, Dave. Thank you very much for that, for that presentation, Miriam, as well. I would like to understand more about the Housing Plan Grant. Can you just go to a tiny bit more detail about that and timeline?
Miriam, you wanna take that one?
Sure. So the work for the Housing Action Plan Grant just started in January and we are currently just finalizing a scope of work for a consultant and we will be bringing that contract for council consideration, I believe, on consent on March 1st. And from there, the work will begin. It starts with a lot of outreach and data analysis and doing a needs assessment first, and then using that information to develop some suggested policies and strategies and tools to help address the needs. And I'm sure we'll have a lot more information in the packet coming in a couple of weeks as well, but I'm happy to share more, too.
I'm sorry, did you say you have the consultants already or you're, you're trying to?
We have somebody that-
You've identified.
Identified, correct.
Thank you. Thank you.
Council, are there any other questions for staff? I have no takers. So, Miriam, David, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, Council.
Okay, Council, it's 9:07. How about a break before we dive into that final topic? Is that okay? Okay, how about five minutes?
We're ready at City Hall. I just don't see everybody up there yet.
Yeah. Councilmember Trine, Councilmember Moran, are you there? Just seeing that with your cameras on. Nope, not back yet.
I'm here.
Okay. Okay. Councilmember Moran is back. Councilmember Trine, are you back yet?
Yeah, I seen Councilmember Trine, he's back.
Okay, I just see him muted and no camera. You see him? Ah, there he is. Now I see him. Okay. Ready to roll. So, Council, our next item is the athletic field improvements at Beaver Lake Park and/or Inglewood Middle School. So, Mr. City Manager, I'll turn this over to you.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I'll introduce Anjali Meyer, the Director of our Parks and Facilities, and she can do the other introductions. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council, Mr. City Manager, Anjali Meyer, Director of Parks Recreation and Facilities. Over the last couple of years, we have completed feasibility studies for both Inglewood Middle School and Beaver Lake Park. Athletic field improvements are identified at both locations in the Park's Capital Improvement Plan. Tonight, we are looking for City Council to select your preferred option for each site and then prioritize which one should be tackled first. These are significant projects and could each take a few years to be completed. And based on staff resources and other projects, we will be able to work on them one at a time. With that brief introduction, I'll turn it over to Kevin Teague, Deputy Director, to make the presentation and introduce other members on staff and the consultant who are present tonight.
All right. Thank you, Anjali, and good evening, everyone. Thank you, Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, City, City Manager. My name is Kevin Teague. I'm the Deputy Director for Parks Recreation and Facilities. With me tonight, we have Chris Jordan, our Recreation and Cultural Services Manager. We have Shelby Peralt, our Park Project Manager, and Bob Harding, Landscape Architect with DA Hogan and Associates. And DA Hogan is the consulting firm that we've been working with on these feasibility studies. So within the last year, staff has presented, presented council with a number of athletic field development options at two different sites. And we're returning to council, asking for your direction on which project to pursue. We will be looking at options at both Beaver Lake Park and Inglewood Middle School. I'll start off by giving you a little bit of background and why these projects are being proposed. We will take a look at the directives of our 2018 Park Recreation and Open Space Plan, how these projects are reflected in our Park Capital Improvement Plan. And then I'll go through the findings of our athletic field study conducted in 2020. After that, we'll go through the options for athletic fields at Inglewood Middle School and then look at the options at Beaver Lake Park. And from there, I'll walk you through a comparison of the two sites before we look at next steps. We are looking for a specific direction from council. First, to have council select a preferred option at Inglewood Middle School and accept the feasibility study as complete. And then secondly, to have council select a preferred option at Beaver Lake Park and accept that feasibility as complete. And then lastly, decide on which site you would like us to proceed with first. I'll start off with a little bit of background as, as to why these projects are being proposed. Our primary driving document is our Park Recreation and Open Space Plan, or PRO Plan. The development of our PRO Plan was a 12-month public planning effort, which included a statistically valid community survey, multiple stakeholder sessions, three public meetings, and a virtual town hall meeting. More than 1,100 residents at Sumamish were involved in this project to help shape the PRO Plan. The results of this public input identified the top priorities of what was missing in our park system. Public feedback within the Sumamish community ranked athletic fields improvements in the middle of other priorities when asked about city park improvements. However, major stakeholders and the leagues that utilize the sports facilities on a regular basis commonly report that increasing the number and quality of athletic facilities are a high priority, with the majority citing synthetic turf as the preferred playing surface. The results of the public process was an adopted PRO Plan with key, with key recommendations that included sports field enhancements. Along with these were some athletic field recommendations. First, to continue with multi-use, the multi-use concept for fields. Secondly, to convert existing fields to synthetic turf with lights. And thirdly, to continue to partner with the school district on field development. The initiatives that surfaced in our PRO Plan are- The initiatives that surfaced in our Pro Plan are reflected in our Park's Capital Improvement Plan. Um, you can see that, uh, in our 2020 to 2026 CIP budget, uh, budgets, four point eight million dollars for Inglewood Middle School and two million for Beaver Lake Park. Additionally, um, we have five million dollars, uh, budgeted in a general header, um, for athletic field projects. Um, that's a total of eleven million, eight hundred and seventy thousand dollars for athletic field development in our CIP. At council's direction, Parks completed an athletic field study in 2020 that analyzed all of the athletic facilities in the city. The study was intended to guide the prioritization of future sports field improvement projects that will increase overall play and emphasize cost savings measured. The study produced the following recommendations. Renovate existing facilities to multi-use, improve overall playing conditions and field quality, build two additional baseball fields in the north half of the city, build two multipurpose synthetic fields with lights, and upgrade five ball fields to synthetic in, synthetic infields. The study, uh, identified specific opportunities at Beaver Lake Park. First, to convert, um, the baseball infields to synthetic turf or, uh, reconfigure the fields as shown in the adopted master plan. Both Inglewood Middle School and Beaver Lake Park sites were identified as priority sites in the study. So now, I'll go through the different, uh, athletic field options developed during our feasibility study at Inglewood Middle School. Um, I'm sure you all know Inglewood Middle School is in the northeast part of the city. It is on north, on the north side of northeast, northeast Eighth Street. The school and athletic facilities were constructed in nineteen ninety-one. In two thousand and four, the city entered into an interlocal agreement with the Lake Washington School District for shared field use. Uh, in two thousand and five, the softball field and tennis courts were reconfigured. And in two thousand and thirteen, the athletic field, um, an athletic field improvement project, uh, at Inglewood Middle School was identified in the city's two thousand and thirteen to two thousand and eighteen Park CIP. And again, in two thousand and eighteen, uh, uh, Parks, our Park CIP listed an athletic field improvement project at Inglewood Middle School as our third highest priority project. In twenty twenty, the city took over the responsibility of scheduling on Lake Washington's, uh, school district's athletic fields throughout the city. As mentioned, the city and the, the school district entered into an interlocal agreement in two thousand and four. That ILA lays out the terms for joint use, uh, of the school district's facilities within the city. This means that the school has priority during school hours and the city has priority on weekends and evenings. An example of this ILA in place with the, is the community fields at East Lake High School. The city partnered with the school district to redevelop three community fields at Inglewood, or, excuse me, East Lake High School. Um, this has proven to be six, a successful model where the city and the district partnered to redid, redevelop underutilized fields, and the city maintains and schedules the fields after construction. With flat land being scarce in the city, partnerships provide opportunities to expand and improve, uh, existing, developed and sometimes underutilized athletic facilities in order to maximize the use for both school and community-based activities. This is fitting with the recommendations of our Pro Plan to address increasing demand for athletic fields. Last year, when staff, uh, brought the feasibility study, uh, for Inglewood Middle School to the City Council, uh, we had negotiated a draft memorandum of understanding that outlined the understanding between the school district and the, and the city for the development of athletic fields at Inglewood Middle School. This MOU highlighted, uh, that the city is the lead agency for design permitting and construction, and the city would be responsible for design and construction costs of the athletic fields, lighting, site work, and associated stormwater treatment, and half of the restroom costs. The school district, uh, would be responsible for the design and construction costs of this, the sixth lane track and associated stormwater treatment and half of the restroom costs. We amended the duration of the agree, the agreement from ten years to twenty years or two turf life cycles, uh, whichever comes first. The MOU, um, also established terms for shared cost of turf replacement with the school district. A termination clause was added, um, to protect the city in the event that the school district were to terminate the agreement before the twenty-year term expired, and outlined that they would reimburse the city a proportionate and prorated amount of the construction cost. The agreement also established financial responsibilities for ongoing utility costs and stormwater, maintenance and capital replacement, as well as repairs. It addressed operational issues such as shared use hours and field use during school events. When we presented the terms of the draft MOU to the City Council, they expressed the desire for the school district to participate more in the overall cost of construction. This would require a change to our existing ILA with the school district. It's important to understand that the, the district's position. In this arrangement, they are supplying the land with its existing infrastructure, parking, stormwater treatment, utilities, et cetera. Uh, synthetic turf is above the standard for the Lake Washington School District's middle schools. Uh, this is important because the district spans multiple cities, and if they pay for synthetic turf fields in Sammish, they would have to provide them, uh, district-wide as it would become an equity issue. Lastly, middle schools, middle school, um, sponsored sports have changed over the years, and the only district-sponsored field sports they offer are soccer and track. They do, they no longer offer football, baseball, or softball. So, uh, this is, uh, the site, the Inglewood Middle School site. Uh, I'll go over what's there existing. There's the, uh, existing drive lanes and parking, um, circulation system. There is a single baseball field. There's the football field surrounded by a track and a softball field, and then there are six tennis courts. Um, now I'll, um, go over the two design options that were developed for Inglewood Middle School as part of the feasibility study. This is option one, and it provides, uh, a single, um, synthetic turf field inside of a six-lane track. Uh, it would be striped for soccer, lacrosse, and football. Um, there would be bleachers that would accommodate approximately a hundred and fifty spectators. The, uh, sports field would be, would have lights, um, and a restroom building would be added as well. Lake Washington School District would build this, uh, of four hundred meters, six-lane rubberized running track, including, uh, space for long jump and triple jump pits, as well as, um, discus and shot put. So that's option one. Option two relocates the, uh, existing football field and track to the north a little bit, and makes room for, uh, two synthetic, um, multipurpose fields that would accommodate football, soccer, and lacrosse. Um, and Lake Washington School District would get their six-lane running track. Um, both fields would be lit, and a restroom and storage building would be added. Zooming in a little bit to this, uh, multipurpose field to the, uh, south, it provides the rectangular field, uh, overlay for soccer and lacrosse. And this is a two hundred-foot softball, uh, uh, softball field, and then a three hundred-foot, um, outfield for baseball. And, and both softball and baseball would have batting cages, bullpens, scoreboards, and dugouts, as well as, uh, field lighting. When looking at increasing field usage, it's important to note that while the city is not scheduling, uh, while the city is now scheduling fields at, at Inglewood Middle School, we do not charge for the use of those fields due to the poor quality of the fields. With that being said, um, with these improvements, the city would begin charging, uh, for the total, total number of hours the fields are used. Option one, with the single multipurpose field, provides an additional seven hundred and eighty hours of available, uh, field time. And option two, uh, uh, with the two multipurpose fields, um, and including baseball and softball, provides an, an increase of twelve hundred and eighty available, uh, field hours. And these are the options, uh, for middle, uh, Inglewood Middle School. The cost, uh, this is the cost information for the two options. Option one, um, comes in at four point three million dollars, and option two at, uh, ten point seven million. And these costs are based on feasibility-level design, but include soft, soft costs for design, engineering, construction administration, studies, and special inspections, as well as contingencies. So, I'm gonna move over now to Inglewood Middle School. Um, we presented the, uh, options for Inglewood Middle School to council, uh, this last fall, and they direct, I'm sorry. Uh, let me back up a little bit. Before I talk about Beaver Lake, we presented the options at Inglewood Middle School, um, to council, and council directed us to stop work there and do a feasibility study at Beaver Lake Park. The feasibility study at Beaver Lake Park was completed last summer. And we presented the finding, findings, uh, to council in November. Just for orientation, Beaver Lake Park is, uh, southeast of City Hall, and it is in the south part of the city, on the west side of Beaver Lake. The site is eighty-three acres, um, an eighty-three acre park, which was transferred to the city in two thousand and three. The current field layout and parking, uh, is approximately eight acres. There are three baseball fields, which were constructed in nineteen ninety-seven. There are a hundred and twelve parking stalls on site and twenty-four parking stalls on two forty-fourth. The athletic field area is constrained by, um, a BPA easement on the east side, and on the west side, um, a Williams gas line easement. The site is currently on septic, and our understanding is that any of our proposed improvements would require connecting to sewer, and this adds a significant, um, cost to the project. A master plan was done for the park and adopted by a city council in two thousand and ten, and this included improvements to the athletic field complex as shown in this graphic. Um, this was developed through a public process with numerous opportunities for public input. With that background, uh, and site information, I'll go through the options that were developed as part of the feasibility study for Beaver Lake Park. So, option one, um, improves the three baseball fields in their current location. It retains the existing configuration and size, improves the three, uh, full-size baseball fields, converting the infields to synthetic turf, while restoring the outfields with new irrigation system and new drainage, and then restoring the natural turf in the outfield. This, uh, design retains the pedestrian surface, uh, between the fields, the bleachers, the restroom, picnic shelter, play area, and the parking area. This extends playability by reducing rainouts and improving field reliability. There is less daily maintenance because of, uh, uh, lower requirement for field preparation. Option two is the option closest to our original master plan design. It reconfigures the three baseball fields, reducing their size to Little League size with synthetic turf, infields, natural grass, outfield. It adds a multipurpose field, um, with lights for soccer, lacrosse, and football. And the benefits are the additional use hour, hours by adding the, this multipurpose field with the lights. The extended playability for baseball by adding synthetic turf infields, which reduces rainouts, and again, less daily maintenance. Uh, this option also moves the driveway, uh, to the park, uh, entrance out of the wetland buffer. Option three is a hybrid between the two, and this option provides one new multipurpose field with lights, and this field is overlaying with little, with a Little League-sized field. It reduces the other two fields to Little League size and converts the infield to synthetic turf. This provides a total of three baseball fields, and, uh, two fields would, would be synthetic infield and grass outfield. These fields support, um, use by Little League with a two hundred-foot outfield. As an option, field three could possibly be designed to accommodate adult softball, uh, but without lights, um, on fields two and three. The existing amenities, restroom, picnic shelter, and playground could be retained, and it allows space for new bat, a new batting cage, new batting cages, a storage building, and improved parking. This option also moves the driveway entrance out of the wetland buffer. Oh, there's the light, sorry. This chart shows the increase in use hours for each of the three options. Option one adds a hundred and five hours, option two adds eight hundred and thirty-five hours, and option three adds one hundred and twenty-five hours. Uh, here's the anticipated preliminary costs for each option. Option one is, comes in at seven point two million dollars. Option two at fifteen point six, and option three at eleven point eight. And these costs include construction costs, applicable taxes, contingencies, and soft costs. Um, and these are based on feasibility-level design, and they assume that the Sammish Plateau Water and Sewer District will allow a divided hookup, uh, for the park, which is, uh, which is still a significant part of the project cost. And preliminary estimates are about one point three million dollars for the sewer connection. So now, let's just talk about site comparisons, looking at these two sites. Um, this slide gives you a lot of information, but shows, um, the two s- sites with their various options side by side. One of the, um, more important lines is probably the first line there. Um, and you can see in parentheses is the added number of use hours, uh, for each of the options. And then also, uh, I'll direct your attention to the bottom line, um, li- uh, which compares, uh, the cost per hour. You might, um, it calculates the cost per hour, per additional use hour, and this has arrived at by just dividing the overall cost by the number of hours gained with that option. At a high level, uh, we can look at the pros and cons of each site. The pros of Inglewood Middle School are that the site is developed with parking. Uh, there's easy access to utilities, and it offers the highest number of new usage hours. The, the downside is that it's not city-owned, um, and it, and, um, so we wouldn't have ultimate control of that site. Um, permitting, there may be some permitting hurdles, uh, that's unknown at this time. Um, and then, at Beaver Lake, the pros are that it is city, a city-owned facility and has an, an adopted master plan. The cons are that it's, uh, there are high utility connection fees, and it's constrained by sensitive areas, and, uh, the two, and the reduc- reduced baseball field size would require relocating adult softball. So let's just talk about next steps. Um, the feasibility studies have been completed for both sites. And we are here tonight for council's direction. Um, design and construction drawing preparation, uh, could take place, uh, in twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three. Bidding and council award in twenty twenty-three, and then construction in twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four. So with all of that, we return to our questions to council regarding the preferred options of each site, uh, and direction as to which project to prioritize moving forward with first. The selected project will be part of our twenty twenty-two work plan. And I will mention the recommendation of the Parks and Recreation Commission. At Beaver Lake, they recommend option number two, and to pri- prioritize Beaver Lake over Inglewood Middle School. And at Inglewood Middle School, they recommend option number two. So thank you so much for your attention. I really appreciate that, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you have, or if we have questions for, uh, the rest of the team that's with me here.
Okay, thank you. First, we acknowledge you for an excellent presentation.
Presentation.
Um, um, sorry, just have this terrible echo, and I'm trying to remember what I was gonna say. Uh, as, oh, permitting for, um, I'm gonna say Beaver Lake. It was, you just had permitting and parentheses, lighting. Can you go into more detail about what your concern is around permitting? And have we done a light study to know what, how we're supposed to better respond to lights? Cause that, that's a huge event.
We, we have not done a study, uh, on that. Um, the lights, now, at, I mentioned concerns about permitting at Inglewood Middle School. Um, and that would be for the lighting there in particular. Um, uh, we, we have not explored, um, potential issues with the neighborhood yet. Uh, but that would, that, that's an unknown and something that we would absolutely need to address, uh, fairly soon into the process. Uh, but that would, that, that's an unknown and something that we would absolutely need to address, uh, fairly soon into the process. At Beaver Lake, lights are included in the master plan. That was, uh, a point that was developed in the master plan process. Um, again, though, there would be opportunity for public input as that, as the project, um, CIPA gets, um, uh, reviewed by the community, uh, uh, during that process.
I was gonna make a motion. I don't have questions, so I guess I, I wanna make sure if anyone else has questions.
I know I do. Um, council member Liam?
Um, I just had a question, uh, Beaver Lake Park. Um, so I'm just looking at the three different options. Was there no way to put, um, the lacrosse multipurpose field with option one where you could keep two full-size baseball fields?
Um, to do that, it would be converting to, um, let me go back to, uh, one of the.
Cause visually, it looks like you could, you could do it, cause.
That, that would be more along the line. So what you're saying is overlaying like, uh, uh, field, uh, two and three or one and two with a multipurpose field. Is that what you're saying?
No, so if you look at option three, the field is vertical, so if you just took that, the field and put it in place of the lower left one in option one, baseball field in option one is basically picking that up and moving it over to option one in the same place.
So you're saying this, uh, this, take this field and move it to o- over here on, onto this field?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, cause I'm just, I'm just wondering about the relocation of the people that are already, um, using that. You mentioned, you, you said that there was a relocation of people playing adult softball, um.
Uh.
Just thinking of options.
I, I, I don't think it fits. I think that we did look at that and that in order to get a full-size multipurpose field, you ha- you have to reduce the size of the, uh, baseball fields to, uh, little league size. I'm not sure, Bob, if, if you're available there to answer it, add anymore.
Yep, Kevin, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
Okay, so the issue with putting the, um, multipurpose field over the top of that field, it, it conflicts in several different ways. It would overlap into the, um, infield area and into the wetland buffer which the, you're, uh, circling on the left-hand side. It also would impact the access driveway road, so we would need to, we would need to modify the driveway road coming in so that, so that it would not, uh, the multipurpose field would not impact that as well. Um, from a space planning standpoint, it, it doesn't work with a full-size lacrosse field to accommodate into that, that rectangular space, which is why in the, in option number three, we have taken in and moved all three fields further towards the, the BPA corridor to generate the space in, in the lower left-hand side of this, of this image here. So we had to make all the fields smaller and move them, move them towards BPA in order to create enough room to fit in the, the multipurpose field.
Okay, I didn't see that area, um, circled in blue. Thank you.
Um, I, I have several questions and I've got them scribbled in multiple places here. So, um, in our master plan for Beaver Lake, there are lights in that master plan, so that has gone through a public process already. Um, but we don't master plan, um, Inglewood Middle School, um, because it's not our property. Um, and therefore lights is not something that has gone through a public process. And that gives me a lot of concern and, and heartburn relative to picking any option at Inglewood Middle School. Um, I appreciate the value that the additional, um, fields have there. Um, but I, I do still have a little bit of, of heartburn over lights and not engaging the public and then saying, hey, we're gonna pick this and we never talked to the public. Um, so as far as Beaver Lake goes, um, you know, we have commissions in place that take these deep dives on these items. And I know that their recommendation was, um, the Beaver Lake Park option two and I, I recognize that, um, that is the biggest ticket item on here. I also know based on our agenda bill that we don't have money, the full bill, um, or the, the, the full amount to pay for it. So I guess my question there is, um, you know, if councils to give direction on option two at fifteen point six million dollars, but we're shy of that in our budget, where are we going to find it?
Question, Anjali, go ahead.
Right, um, yeah, great question, uh, Madam Mayor. Uh, we will anticipate construction in your next budget cycle. And based on the amount spent to date, we have a higher, um, ending fund balance than anticipated. Like we had, we show in our six-year CIP about nineteen million as, at the start of twenty-two, but we are going to have about twenty-five point six million.
Okay, so there will be funds then if we pick it. Okay. Um, okay, good. So that's, um, that's one item. Um, I do have some questions slash concerns relative to the, the numbers. I know that they're not definitive numbers. And because these numbers are static from what the council saw in April of twenty twenty-one, like the construction costs on everything have gone up. Do we have any, um, concerns that these numbers are not relevant right now, given construction costs in the last year have skyrocketed?
I, I think that we can, w- we're, we're comfortable with the numbers that we, uh, have presented here and that we presented, um, in, I think it was April of twenty twenty-one. Uh, what we are hearing is that the price escalation from year to year at this point is at about five percent. Um, and so, you know, the numbers, I think if we were to begin, uh, work, we could see a, an increase of about five percent annually.
Okay, and then how many hours of adult softball transpire at Beaver Lake that we would potentially be displacing?
I think that's ninety, but Chris, do you wanna go ahead and address that? Oh, we can't hear you, Chris.
Can you hear me now? So it's ninety per field, play from, uh, March to June.
Ninety per field, so they can play adult softball on all the fields currently?
Currently, yeah. So they play, yeah, fields one, two and three.
And then where would they go? Where are the adult softball fields in the city that they would potentially be relocated to?
The only potential in the city would probably be, be East of Mamish Park. So, um, there's two fields there, but they are a little bit shorter, so it is the preference of the, um, of the league if they still would wanna do it, so, um. But that is probably the only location that we have that's, uh, fits their dimensions.
Okay, are there not fields at Skyline High School that are for softball?
They have like.
And I, all of that, I don't know the difference between, you know, youth softball and adult softball lines.
Yeah, they just adult softball, so everybody wants to play and they like usually from like nine to three. But they typically want all the fields at one location, especially for the umpire, especially for like, um, set up the league, so they don't wanna be at different locations, so, um, they may, we don't have any softball fields that kinda conduces for, we usually have high school baseball at the high schools or it's gonna be a girl's, um, fast pitch, which is only two hundred feet, which they typically need between eighty-five to three hundred feet fence line for the adult softball.
Okay, alright, thanks, that's helpful. Council, any additional questions? I don't see any. Deputy Mayor Clark, I know you were attempting to make a motion earlier.
Yeah, sorry, um, yeah, I was going to, um, move to approve option two for both parks. I get, I don't know, should I do this in three separate motions? A result is one, okay? I guess we'll see.
I think it's a lot easier to pass things if you make them more simple. The more complex you make them, the less likely they are to pass.
Gotcha. I move to select option two for Inglewood Middle School.
I second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there a discussion? Or, excuse me, first, Deputy Mayor Clark, did you wanna speak to your motion?
I do not.
Okay, council member Trinh?
I just wanted to clarify that we are also accepting the feasibility, feasibility study as complete. If that's included, I'm in favor of the, uh, motion. Thank you.
It was not stated in the motion that accepting of the feasibility study.
I move we amend the motion to include that the feasibility study is complete?
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion on the, um, amendment? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, by a vote of six zero, the amendment has passed. Now back to the main motion as amended, which is to select option two for Inglewood Middle School and accept the feasibility study as complete. Any further discussion? I'll make one comment. I'm, I'm not favorable to this, uh, based on the comments I said earlier. This is, um, a high-ticket item. We're putting in lights on two different fields and we haven't engaged our community at all on lights here. So I cannot support this motion. Okay, I don't see any more hands, so we will go ahead and vote on the motion as amended. Oh, sorry, council member How?
Just, uh, as a question, so if, if there isn't, I'm sorry, there's not a good way to bring this up. If you can't get lights, what do you do? What is the remediation?
That would be a, a decision, um, that we would need to make if it makes sense to, um, if, if there is value in making, in doing the, uh, synthetic turf without the lights. I, uh, my, my guess is it's probably not. Anjali, did you wanna mention something?
No, that's kind of, yeah, what I'd say, we'd probably come back and check in with council, probably crunch some numbers as to
It would come back.
The ret- return on investment would be, um, if we, you know, didn't do the lights. So we'd have to cross that bridge at that point.
Council member Marin?
Yeah, there's that one neighborhood that's back there that I would think that would have a problem, that one road with homes, but, um, Anjali, isn't there so much that they have done with the lights now with the direction and the, of where the lights go and the brightness of the lights and that sort of thing that, um, the disturbance that they would have on neighbors is, uh, so different than what it would have been even five years ago.
That is correct. And if you want our consultant to speak to that a little more, uh, he can do that, but in summary, yes, technology has improved significantly that the spillover of the lighting is a lot less than it used to be.
Right, and so they've got their parking lot which has got tons of lights and, and this is gonna be, you know, so minimal even compar- in comparison. Okay.
Council member Liam?
Can we resolve the light issue first before we motion on this one?
We thought, we discussed that internally with staff, but it would be hard for staff to go to the community or work with the school district, um, to approach them if we didn't have clear direction. So we would need your direction to go out and take that step and it would be as, uh, part of the permitting process that we would reach out to the members of the community and, um, engage with them. And then again, like we said, if we run into some major concerns, we would come back and check in with council.
Anjali, so I, I need to understand process here, cause what you said, um, just now was that if you ran into major concerns, you would come back to council. I am uncomfortable obligating us to putting in lights when we haven't had the discussion upfront. Um, if, for those who recall the discussions we had with putting in lights, these same lights that are shining down and are, are very concentrated, which I recognize, but lighting doesn't just come with lights, lights come with sound. And that was another concern that we heard from the Kohani neighborhood when it was suggested we put lights there is it wasn't just the lights. It was that anytime you put lights on a field, people are on the field later into the evening hours, I think up until nine PM is what our packet says. So you have people out on fields generating noise for the neighbors until nine o'clock at night. And that was another concern that we did hear from Kohani. And I think that's, I'm, I'm fearful of obligating us to ten point whatever million dollars it is, um, when we haven't first engaged the community as we did with Kohani. And of course, that was under a master plan scenario. This is not a master plan, but I still think that we should give our residents the benefit of an engagement possibility on lighting before saying, okay, well, we're gonna put lighting in unless we have some major concern. Um, so I ca- I guess that's my indigestion with this.
Uh, I will say that if you ask a community if they want lights, you'll usually get, you know, the NIMBY, which is the people that are closest to those improvements will say no. Um, Beaver Lake Park Master Plan is something that I worked on back from two thousand eight to two thousand ten. They were very contentious meetings and it, um, you know, you do it for the greater good of the community and it does end up, uh, causing a noise concern for the immediate neighbors. And it wasn't easy to, uh, get that master plan adopted and that will be the case every time. Uh, the consideration with schools is there is some level of reasonable expectation of noise. And, um, and so that is what we proceed with. And, um, you know, you would, the council could still decide on what is the optimum option for that site. And we could not just come and get authorization for all the, the first step would be design. And the best that I can suggest is that we might break that up into not, um, committing all the funds even for design. We could start with the land use permits and do it in two steps. And see, uh, how that goes and then commit more design funds. And you will not be com- committing construction funds in any case until we get to that stage in the process. Uh, I'd also invite Bob Harding, uh, Bob, if you have any recollection on how the community was approached for, uh, either the Eastlake, um, fields, the fields at, um, community fields at Eastlake High School or Skyline, if your firm was involved with any of those projects?
Thank you, Anjali. Yes, we, we were involved in both of those. Um, in the, in the case specifically of Eastlake High School, um, we added lights to both the multipurpose fields as well as to the baseball field, which became essentially another multipurpose field. Um, the process that we went through as part of the design was, was to go door to door, um, which I did, um, to reach out to each of the neighbors that were directly adjacent to the property. In that case, um, at Eastlake, there were perhaps, um, if we count the neighborhood and the larger neighborhood, I, I visit with probably thirty different residents and, and households that were directly adjacent to the site. And not to minimize any, any property or adjacency, but at Inglewood, there are three or four properties that exist along, adjacent to the track. Um, they're large properties, they're beyond a driveway. And so the engagement in that, at least in the immediate neighbors would, would be a little bit more distinct and succinct be- because there aren't, there aren't that many neighbors that would be directly adjacent to this. And I don't mean to say that it's, it to minimize it, it's just that the, there are, there are less impacts because there are, are le- fewer neighbors.
So I think one of those neighbors, uh, neighbor, that bordering area along Inglewood Middle School though is due to be redeveloped. And so there will be additional neighbors. All those homes down that private drive are all sold. Um, and it'll get redeveloped into more homes. So I, I, I mean, I understand what we're saying here about, um, you know, the, the, the neighbors that are, you know, closest are likely to be impacted. I, I just always like to be able to afford our community to weigh in and then it's up to council as representative government. as representative government to then try and pick the choice that's best for the community at large. But I always think it's fair to en- engage them, and this is just kind of an oddball situation, given that we would otherwise master plan this area if it weren't a school that in a property that we simply just don't own. Um so I, again, I just, I I wish there was a placeholder stuck in here somewhere where we had let the c- community know, because what happens is we vote on this and say we're putting lights in, and then suddenly it's out in the community that there's lights going in, and then we hear about it, and that's probably, it feels like we put the cart before the horse. So. Uh uh Councilmember Moran?
Uh yeah, it's my question, yes, my question comes in of, um and I think you may have answered it, how many houses are back there that are affected, and it's four? Did I hear that correctly?
When we completed the feasibility study, there was a relatively few number of residents that were directly adjacent to the middle school all along that along that edge, adjacent to the track.
Um yeah, and I know there's not many, and I know they're gonna be putting in a few more, but yeah, I know there's not a whole lot.
And I I'll just add that um it there was one property that was to be developed, and the development uh uh stopped maybe, uh you know, we don't know why, but at the time, the district was proactively working with that developer to make sure that every homeowner would be made aware, it would be like on their deed, that the the fields adjacent would be developed with lights, so that there was, they were not surprised at the later date.
Anjali, I don't mean to cut you off here, but we, it's ten o'clock, so we need a motion to extend.
I move that we extend by thirty minutes.
Second.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to extend to ten thirty. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, I think that was just one nay, so by a vote of five one, we'll extend to ten thirty. Sorry, Anjali, didn't mean to cut your sentence.
Yeah, but that was the gist of it, that the uh the and you know, that would be the hope with any other developer developing the sites to the west of Inglewood.
Okay, so the second part of my question would be, isn't it easier to work with people as they're coming in versus people that are already there?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Howe?
Um I was just going to uh agree with you, Anjali, but also to the grandfathering thing, but also I think that there is a reasonable expectation that if you live near a school, there is noise and that there is an expectation that there may be lights at some time. So I think, I don't think it's unrealistic that um that we consider that option, so I'm in favor.
Okay, council, I don't see any more hands up, so we will go ahead and vote on the motion as amended. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. So by a vote of five one, motion passes. So we need to contend with Beaver Lake as well, council?
I motion to select preferred option number two for Beaver Lake Park and accept the feasibility study as complete. Seconded.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Councilmember Lamb, did you wanna speak to your motion?
Uh I do not.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, by a vote of six zero, uh we have selected option two and accepted the feasibility study as complete.
Hey, excuse, point, point of privilege. Sorry, Mayor Mao Chow, I'm sorry, I hit the mute button when I said nay. So uh can you change that vote?
Yes, so the on the Beaver Lake, so five one.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh council, there's still one item in front of us, and that is on which site to proceed with first. Um staff can't do both at the same time.
I move to proceed with Inglewood Middle School first.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Deputy Mayor Clark, did you wanna speak to your motion?
No.
Okay, I will, um I don't see any hands. I I my recollection in reading the packet was that Beaver Lake was the op- the option that was supposed to go first. Is that correct? Or was recommended to go first?
By the person.
Okay. So I I will not be uh supporting this motion. I think that Beaver Lake Park does need to go first. It has been master planned for quite some time, and I think it's time to initiate that project. Uh so Inglewood Middle School is very recent they come up. So my preference would be to have Beaver Lake Park go first. Councilmember Howe?
We don't have a park on the north end that's been upgraded. I considered the Inglewood property not nearly as safe because of the lack of turf fields. Uh it's a safety issue for me and and just location-wise, why I was interested in kind of switching the positions for Inglewood first and and Beaver Lake second.
Councilmember Moran?
I agree with um Councilmember Howe. There's just, we need to do something on that north end. They they need a place, so um I'll support this motion.
I don't have any more hands up, so the motion is to um have Inglewood Middle School proceed first. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. By a vote of five one, Inglewood Middle School will go first. Okay, council, um Anjali, Chris?
Thank you.
Somebody else popped up the screen. Oh, no, Kevin, you're still there. Sorry, I like looking at uh all the squares, so thank you all. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, council. Uh so council next is um council reports. Mine's there for you to read. I don't need to read it to you. Um Deputy Mayor Clark, you have a report as well. Did you wanna go over anything in it or not?
No, thank you.
Okay, um anyone else have a council report? Councilmember Lamb?
I had a council report. I'll keep it short since we're over time. Um I was at the PIC committee, a PIC committee meeting, public issues meeting on February ninth, and we approved unanimous unanimously for a state vacant positions. That includes Karen Howe to fill the joint recommendations committee. And um Kaylee, uh Councilmember Kaylee Clark, and I met with Mayor of Issaquah, Mary Lou Polly. It was a meet and greet. And I met with Benita Horn, who is the D E I consultant for the city of Renton on February ninth. And that was to discuss D E I practices and implementation in Renton and possibilities for implementing a D E I program similar in Semenage.
Thank you. Anyone else with a council report?
I do, just very quickly, uh on February ninth, I had a meeting of the YMCA board, of which I'm a member now. And it was basically just to talk about the fundraising that was gonna happen the next night. But what I've also done is I've put together um with YMCA and Eastside Fire and Rescue Corps Connect and trying to kind of put resources together and we uh Rita Ma has been part of that, and Karen Moran has been supportive as well, which I very much appreciate in terms of just figuring out where do we have the services overlap, who has what data sets, and maybe coming together with some recommendations going forward that we can go back to, say, King County Councils to see if we can get score some cash for some programs. So that's kind of what I I'm kind of following the money on that one. And then there was an east side transportation meeting that was on the eleventh. And um God, the staff is fabulous. Thank you for doing notes. And it allows us to concentrate on a, uh you know, on what's happening as and not have to take the notes. It's just amazing. It's such a luxury. Um and what I'll be doing as a follow-up to that, uh you know, they were talking about mobility issues. Uh Metro's trying to rebrand themselves as mobility, and so that can include scooter programs and a many variety, the ride-share programs with bikes. Um I don't know if scooters would work here, but maybe Klahani. So I'm gonna go talk to Vanessa uh Kissir from Red Men, she's gonna give me her scooter data. So ways to do the outreach and talk to the folk.
Anyone else? Okay, um we have our city manager with a report, and this is relative to taking a position and providing feedback on House Bill seventeen eighty-two. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Um I've got Mike uh Sugg on the line. He just can't uh be promoted on here, but he can speak in case you've got some follow-up questions regarding uh the legislation uh results from today. Mike, are you on there?
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Yes, apologies, I cannot be promoted to panelists. I cannot turn my web camera, but uh this should be a fairly quick item. Uh good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and Council, Mike Sugg, City Management Analyst for the City Manager's Office. Uh tonight, I was planning to provide an update on House Bill seventeen eighty-two, which was the middle housing legislation, and then we were going to have a little bit of discussion to to determine whether the council wished to take a position on the bill. However, this is no longer necessary, as the House did not vote on the bill by five P M today, which was the cutoff for bills to pass out of their house of origin, uh which in short means the bill is now dead. Uh but as we have seen before, bills that fail to pass are often reworked and reintroduced in future years. So I don't expect that this will be the last time we see legislation of this nature come forward. Um our lobbyists Luke and Nick will keep us apprised of any developments in this arena. And if there is an opportunity to engage during the development of future bills, we will certainly convey this to the council for input. Uh so with that said, there's nothing that the council needs to do with this item tonight, as the bill is no longer moving forward. Um and I will go ahead and turn it back over to the mayor.
Great, Mike, thanks so much. I I guess that might save us twenty minutes of time on the back end of our meeting here. Um but uh appreciate the update. So um council, is there anything else for the good of the order, or Mr. City Manager, did you have anything additional?
No further report. Thank you.
Okay, seeing none, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move adjourn.
Second.
Seconded, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, by a vote of six zero, we are adjourned. Thanks, council.
Good night.
Good night.